I'm glad the Legion stood by the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no reason to justify.
Pick your role please.
Mayor.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
McGala.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Singer.
Moran.
Right.
Price.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Tannier.
Bennett Field.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Dalles.
Here.
Frizzellone.
Here.
Winfrey.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Staley Ferry.
Here.
Callenger. Marcon.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Tumminello.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Berry.
Yes.
Klydus.
Here.
And Musick. You do have a form.
Okay. Uh, we think that's a good idea. Just don't make stress. Is there any old business to bring forward this morning?
Yeah.
Okay, then under new business, we're going to have a presentation by the sheriff's.
I don't have his mic on. Can't hear you.
Right there.
Can you hear? You want me to speak up? We're gonna have a presentation for the older folks in the back who may not be able to hear as well. Now, we got a presentation by the sheriff department. Sheriff Kelly, I'm gonna turn those to you. The only thing I'd like to say is that I hope you guys can go on and get into a lot of detail. I like to keep this in our twenty-five minutes, five minutes, and we need his questions.
Yeah, we'll keep it in short. Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity for us to address you this morning. A lot of times in sheriff's office, overtime budgets come under scrutiny by a lot of people. So, our goal, the administration's goal here in the last few months was to put a presentation together to show each and every one of you exactly where every penny we spend in overtime goes. I can comment on, most of it is contractual in that we have, you know, time off with vacation and personal time and sick time and comp time, which is all in all these human members' contracts. When we, you know, when they suggest a day off, it always, nine times out of ten, makes us have to hire somebody over. We're gonna concentrate today on the adult detention facility as it's about three-quarters, about, it accounts for about three-quarters of the department's overtime, just in the adult detention facility. So, I wanna thank my administration for doing all this hard work and putting these numbers together. We crunched these numbers over a couple of months to, so that we could give you a nice overview of how the overtime is, how it is in the U.S. So, that being said, I don't want, you know, we don't want you guys thinking that we just sit around and try to look for ways to spend money, little how can we generate some overtime this month? That does not happen. So, that's part of the reason why we wanted to do this. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to my under sheriff, Bob Condro. He's gonna run the presentation.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
First off, I'd like to introduce everybody up here. So, Steve Crusoe, he is our IT person. He's the backbone behind the numbers that we pulled out of here without this all working on you this. Sheriff Mike Kelly. Uh, you have Ward Dale Sanarelli. You have Chief Taylor. Chief Dave Adams. Chief Jungo's Investigations. Chief Ryan Konzer. And sitting in the back is Chief Buddy. Um, and they say "I" a lot, that means "we," I mean the sheriff, so it's just our habit to break. Uh, what we did is we basically reworked the 2010 study as best as we could. And obviously, these, this study took a very long time between us moving in Laramie and everything else. So, it's going to need a little further research. And what I mean by that is we are a 24/7 operation. So, it's not like we have, we know that the overtime is because everybody's working day shift. We have variables where different people were at different shifts, so overtime on different shifts. So, the numbers we're gonna give you today are basically the numbers that we worked from the 2010 study forward. And then from there on, before we recommend any more people, we wanna make sure that we know exactly what shift that goes on. We don't necessarily say if we need twenty people, we're gonna put five on days, five on afternoons, we might put eight on midnights. So, it's a little more difficult to get rid of that overtime. Um, the bail reform, I know we talked a lot about bail reforms so far. We're down about thirty, forty people, I believe, with this bail reform. I know that there was projections upwards of up to two hundred. That may be a little bit more when it comes to this GPS monitoring. We don't know right now. But I know we talked about closing a pod, and right now, as we talk, it's a little difficult to close a pod, because we have people in there that we have to keep separate, whether it's because they're testifying against each other, they had some issues on the streets, uh, you name it. I just can't close a pod and move everybody into one area. We're gonna have a lot of problems and a lot of lawsuits that may come from that. Keep in mind that in 2010, the study said we needed twenty-six people. We have not reduced our jail population since then. We've increased the population of the county. You've got a opioid epidemic going on. And, uh, we've increased our transports. We have mental illness transports. We have transports where we're taking people to dialysis. We're taking them to other courts in Cook County. We're taking them to DuPage County for court. So, just because we have somebody locked up in our facility right now, they have court dates, five court dates, one in Springfield, one in DuPage, one wherever. Those court dates continue to happen, and we've gotta transport those individuals to those court dates, which is a one-on-one, or a two-on-one situation where there's two officers we take out of the jail to transport those people. You're also gonna see some hospital details in here, and I'm gonna get to it. Basically, it's forty-three slides. It's not gonna take that long. I'm gonna trudge you thirty seconds per slide. It's not gonna fit that much per slide. There's some slides towards the back that I'm not even gonna go over. Basically, that's there for your information. There's slides on the Fair Labor Standards Act. People ask why we did four-hundred-and-eighty hours of comp time. It's in the state law. It's also, or not the state law, the federal law, it's also in the contracts. Why don't we just deny this comp time? Well, there's been a court ruling from Chicago PD where, you know, it's just like overtime, comp time, is money. So, we just can't deny it. Say, you know what, you can't take it off today. We're gonna let you take it off whenever you want. So, there has been a court ruling, and that's what stems from a lot of our overtime, where somebody takes a day off, and then we have to backfill them, and then we hire that person on overtime at twelve hours, either paid or twelve hours of comp time. So, if you have any questions, I don't know if we wanna have them during this or write them down. We can have them at the end, and then I'll be referring to my staff here.
I would rather, unless you really need a real clarification on a slide, I'd like just to have the sheriff's department go through our presentation, and we'll ask questions after the presentation.
All right. Of course, I forgot my glasses today, but I can.
I love you, Dave. So, no big deal.
So, prior to, like, 2015, we didn't have any electronic timekeeping. So, to do these, to do this type of math and formulas was very difficult. It was labor intensive. That was what was given to the 2010, um, during the 2010 study. Basically, they had to take all the overtime. So, now we have, in 2015, electronic timekeeping, where I can tell you what they're working, what shift, et cetera. So, when you look at overtime, I keep on hearing, well, we keep on expending all this money. We've got a lot of money, a lot of money. Your overtime costs are never gonna go down. Your hours are gonna go down. And some of the reasons why your overtime costs are not gonna go down is employees are moving throughout the steps throughout the year. So, they're going from step one to step two to step three. When the county gives a pay raise, we don't control that. So, if a two percent pay raise comes in, then obviously, we're gonna pay that two percent on that overtime. Keep in mind that when you settle a contract, when you get the retro, that money is charged back to our overtime account. So, whatever overtime those individuals worked from the time the contract expired until the contract was settled, is going to be paid out of overtime through retro pay. Comp time. I can't control comp time if somebody works it. So, when you work eight hours, you actually get twelve hours off in the future for comp time. So, basically, if you work two days, you will get three days off in the future when they bank that up. So, eight hours turns into twelve, so two days turns into twenty-four, which equals three days. And then I cannot control who works the overtime. So, it's done by seniority. Our most senior officers are the ones who are going to be, by contract, getting the overtime prior to a, um, one-year deputy. Here's your ADF admissions. This is how many people we booked in per month. So, as you can see, it varies in the summertime, then it drops a little bit in the wintertime. And these are the people that we discharge. So, we're pretty consistently booked in as many people as we discharge. And here's your average daily population during the month of how many individuals we had in custody at any time. All right, here's the equivalency for COs. So, basically, how to do a 24/7 operation is we have people who work five days a week, but we have to staff some, a position seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. So, in order to do that, we do what's called the NWH, which is a net average working hour. So, basically, we take how many hours the employee works, which is two-thousand-and-eighty hours, and then we subtract their vacation time. We subtract any personal time. And then we take the entire shift, and we start looking at how much other time they take in sick time, uh, benefit time. And then we kinda get the average amount of hours that an employee is actually available to staff that post. So, you're also going to see a full-time step-one equivalency. We did it another way on top of the study. We put what it would be for a one-year deputy. So, a one-year deputy works twenty-thousand-and-eighty hours. He gets two weeks of vacation. He gets three personal days. So, basically, with a model employee, never taking any other days off, nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-six hours for that individual. A fifteen-year employee, twenty-thousand-and-eighty hours. They have five weeks vacation, two-hundred hours, and three personal days, twenty-four hours. That person gets eighteen-hundred, that person could actually work eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-six hours if they never take any sick time, any comp time, or any other days off. So, here's our overtime hours that was worked for pay. You can see that the overtime hours is thirty thousand, and if you multiply that by time and a half, it comes to about forty-eight thousand hours. Here's your overtime hours worked for comp time. They work ten thousand hours for compensatory time, but realistically, they're gonna be able to get sixteen thousand hours off because of time and a half. So, these would be the eight-hour shifts, and if you multiply that by time and a half, we're up to about sixteen thousand hours. Here's your combination for comp and pay together. Total overtime for comp and pay was forty-one thousand hours, and if you multiply that by time and a half, you're at sixty-one thousand hours, either in comp time or in, um, regular type salary. Here's our other time taken excluding the vacation. So, you can see at the top here, we've got comp times. In 2017, the employees took fourteen thousand hours of comp time. So, basically, they take as much as they earn. Uh, and I don't wanna say that comp time is a bad thing. It's a good thing, in a way, because employees do need extra time off. But normally, if you know that you can keep on earning it, you will keep on burning it. Most in patrol, I would say, what they do is they take the comp time, they save it because you never know when you're gonna get more comp time. But right now, I can work Monday and Tuesday, and then I can take Friday and Saturday off. So, that makes sense, hopefully. This, uh, some of the issues that we're having down there. Vacation time. So, right now, in 2017, we had twenty-nine people who were getting five weeks vacation. 2018, we're now gonna have forty-six. We had more people moving to the steps, which comes to two-hundred-and-thirty weeks compared to a hundred-and-forty weeks last year. So, with that, I'm gonna wind up with this many hours extra in comp time. And you get predictions here, the future, there're gonna be more people, just because in 2019, you're going from two-hundred-and-thirty to three-hundred-and-five weeks. Yes?
My question regarding the comp time, uh, that still requires approval before it gets taken, correct?
It does require approval, but there is a, in the back, there is a benefit comp time we can deny because it's not earned at overtime. Any type of comp time that's earned at time and a half, we basically can't deny it. It has to unduly disrupt our organization. Unduly disrupt our organization, according to the, uh, the judge, is not because we have to hire back overtime. If we have people signed up to work, that is not unduly disrupted. Now, if I have nobody signed up to fill that position, that would be pretty much unduly disrupted, because then I would have to force somebody to work those hours. But in the future slides, you're gonna see that we don't have an issue with forcing people back, because everybody is signing up for the overtime. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right. So, 2019, you're going to three-hundred-and-five weeks, and then 2020, you're gonna be at three-hundred-and-sixty weeks. So, you're gonna need more people here in the future just for, to cover vacations. We had a mass turnover in patrol, and we fired a lot of people in the ADF recently. So, you're gonna have these people moving from your step one to your, uh, step five here in a short amount of time, which is going to increase their, uh, vacation time benefits. Here's our benefit time beginning in 2018. So, basically, the employees at the ADF period over twelve thousand hours of comp time, that was earned at overtime. Your benefit comp time is earned through holidays. That's straight time at eight hours. Benefit comp time we can deny because it wasn't earned as overtime. So, if we're short, we can basically say, you can't take the benefit time. But they have enough comp time, well, they'll just change it from benefit time to an overtime comp time. So, I did some calculations here. So, twelve thousand seventy-seven hours of comp time equals fifteen-hundred-and-ninety-seven shifts at eight hours. That can be taken off by an employee in the future. And then if you divide, multiply twelve, or divide twelve thousand seventy-seven by the time and a half rate, they actually worked eighty-five hundred hours to get this twelve thousand hours on the books. And then if you divide eighty-five hundred hours from here by, uh, eight hours, that's actually one thousand sixty-four eight-hour overtime shifts that were actually worked. And then if you subtract fifteen ninety-seven, you're gonna get five hundred and thirty-three shifts at eight hours. And this net average working hours, which I'm gonna get into in the future, to cover this, we need just three people alone, just to cover that comp time shift. Here are all of our overtime codes, basically. Here's the forty-one thousand hours we discussed. You can see that we don't force a lot of people to work overtime. About a hundred-and-thirteen times throughout the year, we actually forced people where they didn't sign up. That would be Christmas, Fourth of July, those types of holidays, which gets into another point of, you know, if you've got a birthday party coming up in the afternoon, and you're a single parent, do you come into work and you take some comp time in the morning? Because if you come in in the afternoon, are you gonna get forced on overtime where you can't actually attend? Or let's say you've got a, uh, a trip planned, you got a plane ticket to go somewhere. A lot of people don't wanna take a chance, so they'll take that day off, not with sick time or anything, but actual time, whether it's personal time, or vacation time, or benefit time, so they don't have to worry about getting forced. So, your next slide here is your short on shift. You can see that we had about twenty-eight thousand hours of short on shift, and that's one-point-three million dollars. Everything right here, you did not pay out. This is all comp time. So, forced overtime comp time, we still don't have a lot of people, but when people do get forced, they take comp time more than they take pay, so they can take another day off. And then your short on shift comp, you can see that we have about eighty-five hundred dollars. And in this column here, this is actually the hours that they earned when you multiply it by time and a half. So, had, if nobody were to take the comp time, and we would've paid all this, you would've paid about one-point-nine million dollars last year instead of what you paid this year. So, the comp time does affect you, because when you don't, when you just look at the numbers, the comp time is being put on the books to be spent at a later date. And everything with the asterisks after them, they're hired back for the short on shift due to sick, personal vacation, or people taking the time off. I'm gonna go through this real quick. All the work codes that I just showed you, I broke this down by who's taking it and what step. So, you can see right here that most people in step two are, uh, working a lot of comp time, because they would rather have the time off than the pay. So, we've got a lot of people who are working that. And then down here are your highest guys. So, you can see in the middle, there's not a lot of, not a lot of difference. So, the issue that we have is, even if we hire people, if we don't hire enough, if we can't get down to this bottom number, we have to start factoring in, and getting rid of these hours is going to get rid of taking days off, which allows these individuals to work more overtime, if that makes sense. So, here's forced overtime. Go through that slide. Here's your overtime hours worked for forced. You can see that we didn't have that many people being forced, and most of the time, we don't get down to these bottom, uh, individuals when we are forced. Here's your comp time earned. So, right here is, uh, overtime comp time earned. That would be from late police reports going to court, et cetera. That would be from your forced overtime. Here's your short on shift comp time earned. You can see right here, these individuals are earning as much as they can, because they want the time off of work. When they take the time off of work, these individuals here step in by contract, and they take the overtime or they take the comp time. So, once again, depending upon how many individuals we have, if we can eliminate some of this up in the front, we may be able to eliminate some of this out towards the Short on shift pay. So, you can see they're taking, they're working the overtime and taking, uh, short on shift pay also. These individuals here with the new pension law, the county does not contribute to their pension on overtime. That law was changed in 2011. So, that's why you're gonna see I put numbers next to it. So, anything above 2011, the county pays twenty-six percent towards the pension. They do not do it, uh, on these individuals here. And these individuals here also do not contribute to the pension themselves. So, I believe it's about seven percent towards, uh, schlep. So, look, seven and a half. So, those individuals realistically get seven and a half percent more than these individuals down here who contributed to the pension. So, this does not, you want as many of these individuals, I don't wanna say gone, but these individuals here retired. So, you know, it would drive your, it would drive your costs down, just because of the overtime not being, or the schlep not being paid on pensions. Okay, hospital detail. When we have an individual who's sick, has cancer, has heart issues, broken leg, pregnancy, we have to take her to the hospital, and then we have to sit with them until, uh, we take them back to the ADF. So, 2017, sorry, I gotta take a slide here. 2017, you can see we spent twenty-two hundred hours at the hospital. You're gonna see short on shift comp time, only nine people we hired back. That is not true. How this works is, the individual we hire back short on shift may not necessarily be the individual who goes to the hospital. We give that preference to somebody at the ADF. They go, and then we hire back to short on shift, and they take that person's place inside the pod. So, realistically, we spent twenty-eight hundred hours at the hospital last year. If we do that net average working hours, which I'm gonna get to in a little while, we need seven people just for the hospital detail to run them, which is a difficult, and this is where it becomes difficult, because I don't have somebody at the hospital twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week all the time. So, to hire seven people just for a hospital, it is not necessarily beneficial, and that's why I said we need to do further research on, how we need to factor this in. Suicide watches. When somebody's on a suicide watch... Two people for the hospital. For suicide watch, when somebody claims they're suicidal or have, uh, prior, until they're evaluated by mental health, individuals, we've gotta post one individual right outside of that person's door to watch them for eight hours. So, we, if we have three or four, I believe we can have one person watching those three or four, because they're in close proximity. But if we have one on one end and another on the other, which we try not to do, we cannot do that. So, just in how, just in suicide watches last year, we earned thirty-three hundred dollars, or thirty-three hundred hours in overtime, which comes from another seven individuals. And we're hiring suicide watch back often.
Very often. Almost every, every day.
Usually every day. The average is up.
I'm halfway through, so bear with me. Or I can quit right now and disagree with me a little. All right. So, ADF staffing, replacing an employee. Correctional Academy's five weeks, two-hundred-and-thirty hours, field training's ten weeks. For six-hundred hours, that individual is not considered an employee with us. They have to be with another individual. So, when I have somebody retire and not advise us, or we've had some people quit and go to different police departments, we have to hire somebody to send them to the academy. Well, the academy just, we just don't put them in place, it's kinda like school. There's, uh, there's semesters. So, if the semester started today, this guy quit tomorrow, and I hire that individual, I'm not gonna be able to send her to the academy for five or six weeks possibly. Fortunately, a lot of times, we can do a lot of in-house training during that time, but we, we do have more than six-hundred hours. So, when this individual leaves, you've got pretty much six-hundred hours of overtime where you're gonna hire somebody back to fill that shift. The good news is this, you can take the overtime rate of the individual who filled in and subtract that from the straight time rate of the individual who left, because you're not paying that salary. So, it's not like we're just hiring an individual back at, at, uh, just the overtime rate. So, there is a little bit of cost savings with that other individual who had to leave. That's somebody leaves unexpectedly. What we've done here in the past is, when we know somebody's retiring, we try to get that person on board and ready to go when that person exits out the door, which does cost us a little bit of money, because we go over what we're allotted, but we know that another individual will be leaving in the future. So, 2015, twenty-six individuals, sixteen, seventeen individuals, 2017, twenty individuals. So, even if we ask for individuals today, if the number of people we're not asking for doesn't work out, you could always reduce that number in the future just by attrition, because this is the average amount of people that we're losing every year. So, if you multiply twenty-six by six-hundred hours, you have possibly fifteen-thousand-six-hundred hours just in overtime rate. And once again, you would take the overtime rate of the top individual and subtract it from that employee who left. This slide here is basically the difference in the 2011 changes from the sheriff's law enforcement pension. When I say schlep, that's what that means. And right down there, basically, denotes that overtime is not included in the 2011 individuals who were hired after that. So, their overtime does not count towards, uh, their pension. So, once again, when they earn the money for, or when they earn the comp time, there's no reason for them to keep it and use it towards their pension. They just keep on using it and using it as a bank for more time off. There is a link, there is a link on here if you guys wanna go through it later on. All right, so what we did is tier one and tier two. I've got rough estimates of about ninety-seven individuals in tier two, and in tier one, about a hundred-and-eighteen individuals. These individuals here will get, you will contribute to their pension on overtime. These individuals here, you will not contribute to their pension on overtime. Here's our current staffing levels. Comes to two-hundred-and-fifteen. So, corrections officers, two-hundred-and-fifteen of those, supervisors, twenty-three civilian employees. I took some slides out of here for the corrections officers in the lieutenant, because really, realistically, we don't have a lot of overtime with them. I could've shown you a slide where it showed that we only have half of a, half of a lieutenant, because we paid about eighty-thousand hours in overtime, but their base salary's about a hundred-and-ten, a hundred-and-fifteen. So, there's no real, you're better off sometimes paying the overtime than replacing employees when you, when you get to those types of numbers where you're breaking even. All right, here's the shift relief factor. So, basically, this is the number of hours staff are expected to be employed per year minus the average number of hours a staff person is unavailable for vacation, sick, personal, comp days. So, in order to calculate this shift relief factor, we take the net average working hours about fourteen-hundred hours, which is actually what our net average working hours are. An individual working two-thousand-and-eighty hours with all the time off they take in sick, personal, comp, vacation, they're available to work about fourteen-hundred hours. So, if you take an eight-hour shift and multiply that three-hundred-and-sixty-five days per year, you get twenty-nine-hundred-and-twenty hours to staff a seven-day-a-week shift for eight hours per day. And then if you divide that by the net average working hours, you come up with two-point-zero-six employees you need to stack one position twenty-four hours a day. And since we have three shifts, if you multiply those two-point-six individuals by three shifts to fully staff, whether it's nursing, whether it's truck drivers, whether it's whatever, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, you will need six employees to cover, um, that shift. 2010 staff study? The net average working hour was fourteen-hundred-and-ninety-seven. We're down to about fourteen-hundred, uh, and eighteen. So, as you can see here, they took vacation, holiday, comp, sick, and they averaged it amongst all the employees in that ADF, the 215 employees. This was the staffing levels back in 2010. Here's where they said we needed 26 more people in 2010. They also averaged in 2007, 2008. Steve redid the calculations, and I believe this is actually wrong, and this is actually the net average working hours if you add all the time. So here is our calculations from 2017. We came up with net average working hours about 1,400 hours an employee can use. So if we take all these instances and the amount of time taken off and average it out, that's what an average employee is for the whole department. So we went a little further and actually broke it out a little further than the study did. We actually did it by shift. Because taking the whole department, I can't move people with a snap of a finger when I'm short on midnight shift. I've gotta give them a 10-day notice, et cetera. So here, the day shift is about 1,400 hours, 1,497, sorry. So it's pretty much across the board. You just have to keep in mind that your midnights and your afternoon shift are probably your lower seniory individuals. So when you see a lot more comp time being taken here, these individuals are earning it. These are the individuals who are getting two weeks vacation and three personal days. These are the individuals on days that are getting five weeks of vacation. So when we do our shift relief factor for the jail, we take 286, we use 286 instead of 280 because that's what the 2010 study used. They gave, put six more hours in there. And we divide it by the net average working hours, it comes about 1.47 individuals that we would need for a relief factor. And then if we did it by seven days a week, 2.06. So our current full-time corrections officer with the relief factor is 256. We've got 250. To totally eliminate your overtime, your comp time, you would need 41 individuals to do that, which we pretty much know is unrealistic unfortunately. Our comp time accrual. When you did 2010 study, this is how much hours were on the book in comp time. We weren't able to do the expenditures because like I said, before 2015, we didn't have electronic timekeeping. But you can see here, in 2017, 20,000 hours were on the books, so you're up about 3,000 hours. But this is how much time was taken during the year. This is where you wanna start eating away at with your new employees. So when individuals take off, they actually don't have to be backfilled. We don't, we still want our employees to take their time off, but we wanna be able to make sure that it's backfilled and we're not forcing individuals over. Because when you force individuals, it causes stress. It also causes us issues on promotions. Because let me ask anybody in this room, why would you wanna get promoted to go to a worse shift and make less money? Because the individuals and sergeants and lieutenants, they're not getting the amount of overtime that is happening in the jail. So we have people who are actually passing up taking promotional tests due to the fact that you would make more on overtime and no fault of their own. But that's something we've gotta worry about. So salaries, we're at 41, I got about six more slides, so stay with me. What we did here is we took all the salaries, how many people were in the staff, and we put all the different benefits in there. And then we totaled up what a total benefit package is with health insurance, pension, workman's comp, et cetera. And then what we did is we divided that by 280, and that's how we came up with those figures there. This is just a quick slide to show the difference between tier one and tier two. Everybody above here is on tier two. Had they have been on tier one, this would've been their overtime rate. Because they're on tier two, this is their overtime rate. Everybody in step eight through 10, this is their overtime rate here. This calculates in their pension formulas. So you can see a pretty big jump because of that pension calculation. This one here, we just put together yesterday, and this is your cost to hire a new employee. So basically, you have your, we have our hourly base rate, which is this salary right here divided by 280. Then we have the overtime base rate, so it's this number here times one and a half percent. Here's your complete overtime package minus health insurance. The reason we subtracted health insurance, that's a static number. You pay $17,500 a year whether that person's working regular duty or whether that person's working overtime. The only thing that fluctuates are your percentages for FICA, schleps, et cetera. So if we subtract health insurance off there for overtime, this is actually the overtime rate, 37.71 for a step-one individual, $74 for a step-11 individual. This is the base salary plus all benefits. So it's this salary plus all the benefits comes about 120. So our base hourly rate with all benefits is about $57.90. And the difference in hourly overtime rate between a new employee is right here. So basically, if you take this rate here and subtract it by this rate here, it's about $34. If you take this rate here and subtract it by 34.39, it's actually a benefit of a dollar ninety-six. So if you have to hire overtime, there's really no reason to fill, if you have overtime with this individual here because they don't get schlep, the 26% on their overtime rate. According to our figures, it's better to let them work overtime than to hire a new individual because that makes up for the $17,500 in overtime. Did I lose anybody on that? So this right here is your difference in overtime. And right here, this is actually the total if you multiply that by 20,080 hours. So having this individual work overtime here is a deficit of about $71,000 on top of this individual's $82,000 salary.
Do you understand that?
All right. Yes. So I was asked to put this together by Mr. Frisland. So what we did is we averaged 16 people at the full benefit package, comes about $1.3 million, which I believe is what we spent last year in overtime roughly. If you have step-15 individuals working at $74.10 an hour at this rate, at this amount of hours right here, you're about $2.3 million. So what we did here is we took 1976, which is the model employee, and we multiplied that by 16. It was this many hours you may be able to eliminate in overtime comp or overtime pay. And then what we did is we did it one more time, and we took the net average working hours, which is the amount of time the individual's not available to work. And we come up to about 22,000 hours that you would shave in overtime or comp time. And that would be the same cost, but if you had individuals working 74 hours, that's what it is. If you hired 41 people, which is what we came up with, it's gonna cost you about $3.3 million hours, and you're gonna shave about 81,000 hours off of there. So you're gonna have a little bit of a bonus, but when people take overtime, or the comp time, or benefit time, you're not gonna have to hire them back. And then that would be the cost if a top deputy worked this many hours, and then we did the net average working hours. So you'd still be able to shave quite a bit off of that overtime for this cost rate. This is our budget over the past year. So basically, this is what we were allotted in overtime. This is actually what we spent, and then we totaled it all up at the end here. You're gonna see this drop a little bit right here. And the reason for this drop is you opened the new facility in 2010, and you added 10 more housing units. We were also denying comp time back then. And then that ruling came out, and the unions came to us and said, here's the ruling, you can't deny our comp time. And that's why you're gonna see the old administration started increasing the overtime. So you can see, this is actually, this number has actually stayed consistent, which if you think about it, with people going through steps and 2% pay raises, we've actually dropped the hours of overtime. It's just that the cost of an employee and the cost of the benefits have gone up. So we're pretty static when it comes to those numbers there. Some of our budget reduction.
I'll go back to that last slide. When you say actual expenses, does that include the accrued comp time?
No, this is, this is just the budget.
And that's where the problem in all of this is. Actual expenses may have stayed the same or even gone down a little bit, but we have $2 million worth of accrued time sitting out there.
Correct.
That isn't hitting the budget.
Correct.
And the accrual time is increasing.
I go through this with the chiefs all the time because they just look at the money, and I tell them you have to look at the comp because at any time, an individual can say, you know what, that whole shit can say, well, we're gonna go on vacation for three weeks to Michigan.
It's an unfunded liability.
Right. This should be our last slide. So our budget reduction efforts. We closed the Creed holding facility. We got a little bit of grief over this from people out east, but what we did is, instead of us actually holding individuals overnight all the time, if a department has custody, we'll actually send one of our squad cars there to pick them up and take them to our jail. We were housing .08 people at night, which wasn't even one individual. So what we did is we transferred those corrections officers back to the jail, and that's what their base salary was right here, not with fringes and everything. So they took off probably three more shifts at the ADF by just closing that facility. They signed a two-year medical contract in 2017. Can't read that. Saved about $900,000 over three years. Inmate phone and commissary sales were increased as a result of the commissary provider contract, so we negotiated a new contract with the commissary. And then the commissary, we reduced some overtime with the commissary coordinator to about $1,000 per month. And that inmate debit collection method was changed to fractional payment versus 100% collection to increase debt recovery rate. Dave, you wanna explain that real quick?
Basically, if an inmate damages something in the ADF, or they owe us money for something, say to see a nurse for example, and they don't have any money, or let's say they paid a portion of that debt and didn't pay the rest, if they have no more money left on their commissary funds, which is what they buy their shampoo and cookies with or whatever, if they don't have any money left and they know they owe the county a debt, they will not put new money on their account because they know we're gonna take it. So we end up never collecting that money. So what we did was, instead of making it a 100% collection rate, we changed it to 25%. So now, if the young man's grandma gives him $10 to buy cookies with, we get $2.50. He still has to spend 7.50, which keeps the money coming in. We expect that to raise that debt collection rate.
And then computer-based training. What we're doing now is we bought a new program, and all of our corrections officers, civilians, and patrol division, we take a lot of computer-based training instead of taking people off of the posts and making them sit in class for eight hours per day. So we still get our required amount of hours that we're supposed to do per year by the state, and then the individuals can take this over the year or over years' time instead of all at one time. Here's your references. This basically tells you what these slides are for. So if you go through them, this is your Fair Labor Standards Act. I highlighted some stuff when it comes to compensatory time, why we can't deny it, when they can bill it, how much is paid out, et cetera. And then the slide here at the end is United States Court Ruling of Appeal from Chicago. And I actually put the link down here that you guys can go back and actually read exactly what was said on why we're not denying comp time.
Well, firstly, I ain't gonna ask you a couple questions. I actually made you a couple certifications on something. One thing we can demonstrate for certain is that there's a systemic problem that there's no way to get around it. It's built in the system, right? The overtime building system. You hire someone for 2,080 hours, but they only work 14,000, 17,000 hours. That's the reality of it. So, but let me say a couple things. First, over the last, and I don't know exactly when we went to correction officers, right around 2000, 2001, somewhere near. You know, we have hired well over 100 additional people over that period of time. It may not have been enough, but I do wanna point out, we have hired a lot of people over the last 15 years in the corrections and draft. Deputy went out, correction officers went in, deputy, numbers didn't really reduce that much. I think they digged it out slightly, but so certainly, this board has made a assertive effort in overtime, funding the sheriff's department is appropriate. But there's this kind of systemic problem. And so I'm gonna ask a couple questions. One is, in the union contract, specifically the correction officer's contract, if you, if we're not able to hire what I'm gonna call floaters, relief people, folks that aren't assigned, you know, in, you know, my old days when I worked on the docks, the guys that came over 10 percenters, right? They'd go around call all the time, you know, so that type of thing. If you don't have some type of system to give you flexibility to assign people, well, you know you're going to have planned time off because you know the person's going on vacation or whatever. You know, if you don't have the ability to move somebody from shift to shift, call them a floater or whatever, I don't know if 41 is enough. So I just think we have, the sheriff's department needs some flexibility with that work stat. And I don't know if that's allowable in the contract. And you may, you may not know right now, but I'm just pointing out, I do think that if we can get some additional flexibility with the workforce, I think it would really be helpful.
We hire people seven days a week, I would say, on overtime on every shift. So we already know that there's planned overtime. So having a floater, what are you gonna, I don't understand what the floater would actually do, since we know that we probably hired three to four per shift.
Well, I think, I think it gives you additional flexibility. You may not think so far, but I think if we really look at it, I think that some flexibility in your workforce is helpful, right? I'm not here to, I'm just giving you my comment. You don't have to agree with me. I'm not here to debate with you on that.
You mean somebody, Tim, that we could, one day could work a day shift, and the next day, and then we're getting them?
Say, look, you know we're gonna be short on the second shift next week, and you know, you're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna move to the second shift in the next two weeks because they just told us five more are on the table. I know you can't adjust it from day to day. I'm talking about people that you know are planned. Give you some flexibility to move people from one shift to another. So I'm just, you know, I'm just kinda saying to you. The other thing I'd probably ask you is, I don't know if it's in the contract, I'll have to go look. But we did, did the 12-hour shift agreement with the union at one time. I don't know if it's still in the contract. And you can, and you can, and you can, 12-hour shifts, or shifts that just don't all end at the same time, can be very helpful. You know, I don't want to drop that nobody wanted to work it or whatever, but I think that to sit out one more time, or maybe more than one more time, to see if there's enough interest in people who are interested in a 12-hour shift, can give you, here's that, it's a flexibility issue because they overlap all their shifts, might be worth a look.
We agree on that. Actually, patrols on 12-hour shifts, we spoke to them.
So you know works well.
Well, the problem you have is you've got a short day the way we do it now because with that, there's built-in overtime. So in patrol, they work 12-hour shifts, and they've got a short day of eight hours. So that short day would be an issue when it comes to the jail staff because you would be understaffed, but we, I've asked the jail staff to take a look at it. We're actually gonna put this on paper, the different 12-hour shifts, because even if we have to pay that extra amount of time, it may be beneficial.
Yeah, because then you don't necessarily have that shortage because they're overlapping. I just wanted to mention that, you know, it'll be nice to have another look at that. And, you know, well, we can eliminate, you know, and I understand perfectly what you're saying, and I think there's always gonna be overtime in sheriff's departments unavoidable. Just unavoidable. Especially after patrol, but they do a lot of activities in the jail, couldn't be better than the entity. So, you know, you know, early in the year, I wanted to give you the difference from the gun, not 41, but whatever you were asking for. I think it was some thought of, let's wait. But I think that eliminates, that was Mr. Frisland said last week. I didn't want to say your name, Mike. So you know what, so you all blame Mike. It was, you know, but certainly where it makes sense to re-on more bodies when it's helping eliminate overtime, it doesn't really re-on any additional cost. So, you know, I think the board is supportive of that.
You're still going to have overtime, so I want, I mean, even if we have.
You hear what I said, Bob? We're never going to eliminate overtime in the sheriff's department. Understood. It's understood. It's unavoidable. We understand that. But when you see what you've done, and the overtime is built in the system by shortages or the comp time, how it's handled, people only work 1,400 and a little bit 75 hours, whatever it is, that we can correct, that we can address. And that's when, you know, whatever, people flew out with that and out 30% of the shift calls because they're sick, you know? We're always gonna have those kind of things. We can't avoid it. On the street, never gonna avoid there's an accident, and people have to stay, you know, or something, something. know, or something, something happens, you know, you know, like I said, on the street where it's a criminal matter, you can't say, well, my shift's up, I gotta go now. We understand. Now, really, I really, for me personally, and I would say this to the board, I think we focus on jail because that's more predictable, right? I mean, generally, unless something really goes wrong. I mean, it's not like, you know, a deputy doing a traffic accident, a fatal accident, he has to stay and, you know, whatever, he has to come out to do all the investigative stuff, so. But I think, I think, I would rather have us focus on, you must, jail. More control.
Just, just one comment also on the contracts. When we, when we negotiate contracts, we do not negotiate anything that impacts the county financially. So we will negotiate contracts with these individuals, you know, on where they're going to work, but if they're looking for an extra week vacation or they're looking for more holiday pay or anything financially, we leave that up to the county to make that decision. So.
The only thing I'll say is, I'm not going to let you totally up the hook.
All right. This is a.
Work rules can have economic implications.
They can. They can. But.
But I don't get confused.
We, if it has to impact us financially, we're not going to approve it. We're going to send it back to the county for approval.
You know, quite honestly, I think that, you know, the amount of time we're allowed to accrue, uh, uh, sick time, we didn't even talk about those things, but sick time and comp time, I think our limits are pretty high. I, that's a contractual thing, but I think it is something that we probably need to negotiate with the union, how much time can be accrued. It may be painful to pay it out sometimes on an annual basis, but you cannot go to prove it until, okay, actually Chuck, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying for me something. You, you have three shifts, uh, watches, right? Over a twenty-four period. And yet, so that's one person per shift, I would think, but then you're saying that you have a, a two-point-six people relief package. So are we saying we need five people, oh, more than five bodies per shift in order to get this done because of the way all the comp time and everything is put in there? Because I agree with Jim, I was thinking the same thing. What, what are we doing with this comp time that we're not just letting this thing go so far over the top?
Well, if you hire more, if you hire more individuals, when you want to take comp time off, I don't have to back another individual who's going to earn more comp time. That's where your comp time number is going to start dropping. Then when these individuals, like a checking account, when it gets down to a certain point and you know they can't earn anymore, unfortunately, they either stop taking the days or they can't take the days. So then they're, they have to come to work and then we have to deal with it if they start taking other types of.
So, so, and, and, and I guess that's my point in regards to, it seems to be over the top. We need to figure out a way to maximize, saying, this is a maximum comp time. I mean, they do this in business all the time. You know, you guys can accrue up to this point, but at this point, it's going over the top. It's, it's an unreasonable request kind of thing.
But that's in the contract.
I was going to say, the law.
Yeah, so that's a contract agreement. Once we, once the contract, federal law.
Okay.
So we can't even negotiate. We can't even negotiate and say we can only do.
You can always bargain your rights away to certain things as long as the union agrees to it, maybe. Mary, I'm hoping you'll agree with me. I, I said basically if we come to an agreement with the unions that we can give less, then, then as long as it's bargained through the contract, you can actually give less than forty.
That's true, but they're going to want something for that.
Right, they're going to want something for that. Understood. Maybe in some kind of dollar payout so that we're having a, a known entity versus an unknown entity.
How, how, how about? It doesn't say may, it said, it doesn't say must, it says may in, in the federal pay.
So there's negotiation.
If the county can negotiate.
I think we could negotiate, so we don't pay comp time, we pay overtime.
Remember what I said at the beginning, we're looking at hours. So you want, you want to get those hours down, whether it's comp or whether it's the overtime hours.
Yeah, the other thing I would say, and I might kind of get into this here, the other thing I want to say about comp time versus overtime, and, you know, Bob, in your, in your, in your presentation, you, Preyron said it's kind of a wash. It's earned, it's taken. So it's always a kind of a constant number, doesn't have a large fluctuation. But everybody here should understand overtime, but whether you pay them today or tomorrow, it's all overtime, right? So, uh, and as long as they have the choice of doing comp time or overtime, they're just saying, well, I won't take it on this check, I'll take it on next check. They could, I mean, be rough. So we should understand that's all part of the overtime equation, even though it doesn't always show, Bob, can you make the mic? There's always an additional two million value if that's what the number is. You're paying them. It's already built in. You're going to pay the two million because it's kind of a wash.
And it's going to compound over years.
Right, we, we don't know that that is the number.
And you can bring out a higher rate potentially.
Exactly. That's why that number, that number's an estimate average because we don't know when they're going to take the comp. If they take it at a higher step, a year or two later, they get paid at a higher rate. So we don't even know that that number is a true number.
Well, the point I want to, I'm trying to make though, if they take it and it creates additional overtime, you automatically have two million dollars in overtime. Before, before anybody works, right? Which is something that we have to try to resolve. Or, or put in the budget, whether it's, you know, uh, show it as comp time and it's taken out of a different line item, instead of saying overtime, accrued comp time.
All right, so I spent a lot of time with Bob and, and yes, I was the one that said we shouldn't do that beginning, hire at the beginning of the year because we did hire five people several years ago, three years ago, to kind of start the process with this. And since then, I've been asking, let's do this report. So we have a report, we have information now. I still don't think we should end here. It wouldn't be a bad idea for us to have an independent study and kind of go over all the numbers Bob put together and maybe make other recommendations too. But I feel there's, there's three areas that we're going to have to look at in the future. One is the contract, certainly. We're going to have to be a little tougher in negotiating the contracts because this accrual situation is not going to get better. And, and the problem is going to be, like we talked about, the salaries are going up so that those accrual hours are going to pay at a higher rate and that number's just going to continue to get bigger. So the main goal is to get rid of those overtimes so you're not accruing. Does it mean that you're going to save dollars upfront? Not necessarily saving dollars. What you're saving is all those accrues. If they can't accrue, then there's no liability there. So contracts are going to be, you know, first thing. The second thing is because of the tier one and tier two, we have a situation right now that, and I think this should be part of a, a study as well, we may be able to do some buyouts that save us in the long run. If you took a look at those top two steps, ten and eleven, they were the number two and the number three group that were taking overtime, which is costing us the most of anybody that takes overtime. So maybe there's some buyout opportunity in those two steps that would help reduce, I think about that, Bob, and I talked about this, that might help us reduce the dollar amount that we are paying on the overtime that we're going to have to pay. And then thirdly, I do think we need to add the people. I talked about a number of sixteen, thanks for putting that up there. Obviously, forty-one is realistic. When a study that we commissioned in 2010 said twenty-six people, since that time, we've, we've added five. So back in 2010, theoretically, we would still need twenty-one, but if we get at least sixteen, again, just like we said last time when we were at five, as we chop down little by little, we watch how the accrual maybe stabilizes or starts to go down, then we start adding the next group. Key is we do need to start adding fairly quickly because, as Bob said, we've got training time there. And as we start losing people, before you know it, we're not just adding sixteen, we're hiring five or six more replacements and they have to get in, in the queue as well. So I do think we need to start moving forward, at, at least hiring a group, even though I still think we can do an independent study to look at some of these other options, even give us some recommendation on, on contract points that we want to go after with each contract. But we do need to start hiring some right now, so we get in the queue.
Yes. First of all, gentlemen, thank you so much for that presentation. Sheriff, that's been very helpful to me. That even answered a lot of questions for me. However, my question is, is there a portion of this presentation can be available to us as we begin our budget talks in 2019? Later on this year, we can refer back to and/or can you bring all these handsome guys come back and sit right there where they are? Or can we have access to that so that later on we can, it can answer questions?
The presentation that we did today?
Yes.
It was sent out late because we worked on it late, so it is actually attached to the agenda.
To, to what agenda? To what, I didn't say. Oh, I didn't get to that. Okay. Oh, you just did it this morning?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
You know, it's not that this conversation has to end. This is a presentation, give you some, to, to explain how it kind of works, whether overtime, how it's kind of built in, what is actually the work hours that a full-time employee is, is on the job. So, uh, in any way, that's a good story.
You're going to give a quick answer. Go ahead.
I hope so.
Give a quick answer. Because Mike had brought up a point about the curves. Can you tell me in the contract where we have the person has comp time at one step level and doesn't take it while he's on that step? He automatically gets the higher level if he moves up.
It's a.
And it's there. Where you've carried it higher. Is that, is that something that's negotiated or is that by statute?
I think it's, I think actually, Mary, I don't think we have a choice.
I think the law.
I think so, you know.
Well, there's a difference between the law being mute and.
Well, let me, let me point out one other thing. And I think this is part of it, to, to start banking at different levels, I don't know if it's an accounting nightmare, you know, I think it'd be difficult to do. When you, you know, when you figure somebody goes through maybe, how many steps do we have now?
Eleven.
Eleven?
And where originally got the.
Where, where are they accumulated at?
Maybe that's where the payout discussion comes. That once you move from one step to another, that you pay out at the current step as you make them move up. Pardon me, that would be annually. So annually, there would be, there might be some kind of way that they would be contractual. So it's, it's at least a discussion that we could have from a contractual standpoint so that we're not getting into that nightmare, yet accrual. The accrual is not being paid out at a level that's four and five times higher than it was originally taken, because I find that to be a problem.
Is it really something?
Yes. I just want to make the, this really doesn't have to do with the overtime. But I don't know if the whole conference will stay for our next meeting. I know we're going to be talking about some grant opportunities for drug awareness. And the one thing I do want to say is in all the conversations we talked about people, we do need some, we do need to add some people in, in drug enforcement and gang unit. We've been talking for months and months and months about awareness, what Dr. Burke was doing. Thing is, if we get the drugs off the street, awareness is great, it's a little harder for them to buy the drugs. So I do, we need, I think we need to look at that as well. One to two people will be great.
Mike, Mike and I discussed this yesterday. Basically, our patrol has not gone up. We've got X amount of number of individuals in our gang unit, which really more does drugs. These smaller towns do not have drug units. Your major towns, probably Joliet, I'm not sure, Bullingbrook hasn't has actual drug units, but when there's a drug problem in a community, we get called in there. We can do this twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week because unfortunately, drug dealers do not have hours, nor are they ever on time. So.
When they, when they, they did that Brady Week sweep not too long ago, that was mostly our department, our gang unit, our warrant division and one or two Brady Week guys. It was mostly our department that did that. We assisted them, but if they didn't have us to rely on, it would have got done.
We'd like to treat the cause and not the symptoms.
But I would, I would like us to look for some more grant opportunities for that as well, but I think we're at that point in the opioid epidemic that if we can start getting some of these guys off the street, not that awareness isn't good, but if you can't find the product, it makes the whole easier.
It still plays, it still plays a role for sure. We're stepping up on that too. Our, our sergeant that's in charge of our K-9 division now is riding with the state police interdiction team to learn how to do drug interdiction. Our roles here so that we can start, you know, taking more off the street. So we, we leave, you know, we leave the charge out of that in this college pretty much. We're going to, we're going to add to that as well, so that will, that will work out great.
So, so since I've been on the board, I continue to say what Chuck had said earlier, that we need to really look at what we're paying on comp time, just continual accrual that'll happen in the private sector. And I know that our union, the union has our contracts and we have to abide by that. So as we move forward, we've been looking at getting more from our employees to help pay for their health insurance because the health insurance cost has one up. So I'm hoping our, our friends on the other side of the aisle see the importance of putting something in the contract as to what payout for comp time, for sick time, all that happens because if we start somebody at twenty-two dollars an hour, it's without benefits, it's thirty-some dollars with benefits. And then they end up at, I don't know what the topic was. Well, with benefits, seventy-six. So when they, if they are able to accrue this time forever and ever and ever, we have a huge payout, which is why Bob says then they have to take all that stuff out of overtime. And when we had our county executive give us a budget that said there was zero dollars in the sheriff's department overtime and then they say it's balanced, how, how do we not see that as totally not balanced if we know for sure? And since I've been on, we've always had about two million in overtime. And you can see how they juggle, it's a juggling match for these guys to make sure, because they have to have tops of those spots to do the job. So they struggle every day with trying to do it. We have to give them some support so that in addition to this, we're able to continue to pay our employees because we need them, but we also have to be able to be accountable to our taxpayers because if you let this go and we do nothing, I don't know what we'd have to increase taxes. That, that is a key element that has to be understood.
One thing about comp time, it does not affect your payouts when it comes to the retro. Obviously, they'll take that step and if they do cash out, they're going to go and cash it out at the next level, but your comp time stays on the books. So we're not paying out any, uh, retro checks when it comes to comp time.
But I do think we got a couple of years left on these contracts, I believe.
No, we're negotiating now.
We didn't finish with you guys. Well, you know, so.
We have five contracts.
Corrections or deputies or both?
Every single one of them is up.
Civilians are executive. They have to act as.
So the road deputies, the road sergeants.
Well, I think there's, you know, there's an opportunity for us to, to, we can make some changes and do, you know, whatever, twenty-four month buyouts and twelve month payout for, 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 we have enough to bring down to the rest there. So to those questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Your favor.
All right.
Thanks, guys. Okay.